Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, May 11th, 2021 Work Session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tom Keiger. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as one of the Commissioners for the Gastonia Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for all our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my far left.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
Good evening, Bob Hovis, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Before we begin this evening, in a sign of respect and memory, I would ask that we would all stand and join in a moment of silence for Sergeant Chris Ward and the K-9 Deputy Logan Fox, who were tragically killed in the line of duty in Wataga County. We'll start with our proclamations and commendations at first as Commissioner Kim Johnson.
Thank you. Would the Herndon family please come up here and all of your friends and family, Mount Holly Police Officers, and whoever else is here?
Can you hear?
You can hear me. Short beep. Department lost an outstanding young member of its law enforcement family when Officer Tyler Avery Herndon, age 25, was fatally wounded in the line of duty while responding to a break-in of a local business on December 11th, 2020. And whereas the City of Mount Holly and his fellow Mount Holly law enforcement officers join law enforcement and citizens across Gaston County and the state in remembrance of the service and sacrifice of Officer Herndon as he was laid to rest on December 15th, 2020. And whereas Senator Tom Tillis honored his memory on the floor of the United States Congress during the proceedings and debates of the 116th Congress Second Session, and a transcript of this speech will be forever kept in the Congressional Record of the United States Library of Congress as Volume 166, Number 212. And whereas Officer Herndon, born December 13th, 1994, was raised in Kings Mountain, North Carolina, and graduated from Kings Mountain High School in 2013, where he was a member of the soccer team. And whereas he attended First Baptist Church in Kings Mountain, North Carolina, along with his loving parents Mark and Debbie Herndon and Sister Lindsay Herndon. And whereas Officer Herndon graduated from the University of North Carolina Charlotte on December 15th, 2017, earning a Bachelor's of Arts degree in criminal justice with a minor in psychology. Whereas he graduated, assumed a culotte from Cleveland Community College in May of 2018, where he obtained his certificate in basic law enforcement. And whereas on January 23rd, 2019, Tyler Avery Herndon accepted the oath of office as a Mount Holly Police Officer and began his pursuit of a career in law enforcement as a member of the Adam Team of the Patrol Division. And whereas Officer Herndon quickly distinguished himself in the force and was in the top three of the department in felony charges and arrest in 2020. He was also well-known for helping those in need and for his strong sense of duty and morality, which guided him throughout his young life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners joins impotamusly honoring and commemorating Mount Holly Police Officer Tyler A. Herndon for his selfless determination and bravery in protecting the citizens of Mount Holly and for making the ultimate sacrifice in the performance of his duties to serve his fellow man. His steadfast courage, work ethic, and genuine compassion for others will never be forgotten to be adopted the 25th day of May, 2021. And on behalf of myself and the Gaston County Commissioners, we are truly honored to present this to the family, and your son's sacrifice will never be forgotten. Thank you. Look at this one. Would you like to say something?
Take your time.
First of all, I'd like to thank the County Commissioners for what they're doing here tonight to honor my son Tyler. Appreciate it, we really appreciate it, thank y'all. And to Mount Holly Police Department, what they've been to us. You know, December 11th was the hardest day we've ever been through. And I can't believe it's been five months today, seems like yesterday, if that makes sense. But I said, like again, I want to thank Mount Holly for everything y'all have done for us. No, we wouldn't have made it without them. And support from the local law enforcement, Kings Mountain, Gaston County, Gastonia, Cleveland County. You know, we, as a parents, we never thought this would happen, but you know, back in your mind, these officers go out here every day to serve and protect us. They put on their uniform, their, all their equipment, don't know if they're coming home or not. That's the, that's the challenge they face every day. And I'm just want to say thank y'all for all the police officers who serve us, because y'all really do earn my respect, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you again, Commissioners.
Folks, I think it'd be appropriate if we stood and gave an ovation in the memory of Officer Herndon.
On behalf of Mayor Brian Huff, members of the Mount Holly City Council, City Manager Miles Braswell, the Mount Holly Police Department and the City of Mount Holly, I'd like to thank the Gaston County Commission Chairman Keiger, County, all the County Commissioners, Chief Johnson for presenting this proclamation. County Manager Dr. Eagle, thank you. Thank you all for inviting us to participate in this presentation. This resolution to commemorate Officer Tyler Herndon helps us ensure that his service and sacrifice will always be remembered. Not only did the Herndon family and the Mount Holly Police Department lose Tyler, but the Mount Holly community and the Gaston County community lost a dedicated servant and a valuable resource. Just as we are grieving in Mount Holly, all of Gaston County is working through the healing process. Tyler now belongs to all of us in law enforcement and to all citizens of Gaston County. He has earned a place in the history of Gaston County. We thank the Herndon family, parents Mark and Debbie, Sister Lindsay, grandparents, girlfriend Holly. We thank them for raising such a fine young man and for preparing him to make such a positive impact on our community. It's also become clear that we have been entrusted with the great honor of continuing the service that Tyler and so many of his colleagues that made the ultimate sacrifice have provided over the years to our community and our country. We now understand that it is our responsibility and duty to ensure Tyler Herndon is remembered for his service and for the way he lived. By you presenting this resolution tonight to commemorate Officer Herndon, you have presented an opportunity for us to talk about Tyler, to remember him and to allow our community to know him and to remember his service and sacrifice. This is our commitment, our duty, our responsibility, and it's our distinct honor that we will always remember Tyler. So I thank you for this opportunity to act on this commitment. Thank you again. Bye.
Is there anyone else that is going to speak or would like to speak? Thank you very much for honoring us by coming out tonight, and our prayers and best wishes go out to the family and friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Johnson, while you're there, do you have the other, your next proclamation?
I do.
All right, we'll save a little time and legwork.
Sheriff Allen Cloninger. So last week was National Correction Officers Week, and of course, I was a detention officer for over 25 years, so this one sits close to me because being a detention officer is an extremely hard job that a lot of people really don't realize, all the work that goes to that, and everything they put up with, they have to have so much patience and understanding. And unlike law enforcement, they come to the jail and drop somebody off. Well, the detention officer has to put up with this person for 30 days, one day or years, so they have an incredible job, and it's a privilege for me to honor detention officers tonight. Whereas approximately 150 Gaston County correctional officers and correctional employees are responsible for the daily supervision and custody of approximately 600 offenders housed in Gaston County's prison system each month, forming a core element of the public safety team of our community. And whereas correctional officers and correctional employees provide security, supervision, treatment services, and reentry efforts for offenders in course of each year, and whereas although correctional jobs are extremely difficult and stressful, those who work in this profession perform their duties with dedication and great pride. And whereas the efforts of correctional officers and other correctional employees are critical to preparing offenders for successful reentry into their communities, and whereas Gaston County is proud to recognize the dedication of its correctional officers and correctional employees, now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 8th, 2021 as Correctional Officers and Correctional Employees Week in Gaston County, North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens to be adopted the 25th day of May, 2021.
I still call her Chief. She's Chief Johnson, but she is a Commissioner now, but she told you about a group of men and women that every day do a very, very, very hard job. You don't see them out on the street, but they risk their lives even more than officers do on the street. The average jail pod has 50 people in it and usually one detention officer in there with them. Takes a lot of bravery, commitment, but also a lot of compassion to work in the jail. So I appreciate you remembering them and honoring them just as you would anyone else because without them, then I don't know what we'd do. Every day they come in there, and even though the numbers are dropping, the people willing to do that job, they still come, and I have to say I'm very, very proud of them, and I hope you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next up is a proclamation to proclaim this week as Law Enforcement Week and May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day in Gaston County by Commissioner Worley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, it again falls on me and my honor and privilege to be able to present the proclamation for Law Enforcement Week and also Peace Officers Memorial Day in Gaston County. And, you know, just as we heard about the Herndon family tonight and we followed that story, there's been 121 officers killed this year in the line of duty, 2021. When I hear somebody talk about defunding our police departments anywhere in America, it offends me as a retired law enforcement officer. If anything, we should do everything we can to support these men and women that put on the uniform every day, so I would never be voting to defund any of our law enforcement. But enough of that, on with the proclamation. Whereas it's important for the people of Gaston County and its municipalities to know and understand the problems, duties, responsibilities of our law enforcement officers and agencies. We applaud the members of these agencies for recognizing their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Whereas our nation more than ever depends on our law enforcement as our first line of defense. The men and women of these agencies give of themselves day in and day out to preserve our homeland's security. Whereas in 2020, 115 peace officers across the nation and five from North Carolina were killed in the line of duty. Whereas members of law enforcement agencies of Gaston County and its municipalities play a vital role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of our local citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaim May 9th through 15th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Week in Gaston County, and May 15th, 2021 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and join law enforcement officers nationwide in honoring their fallen comrades and urge Gaston County citizens to commemorate law enforcement officers past and present. Be it further resolved that the citizens of Gaston County recognize and appreciate the contributions made by their local law enforcement officers for the handling of difficult situations they encounter on a daily basis. And this will be adopted also on the 25th of May, 2021. Sheriff and Chief, if y'all would come forward and accept the proclamations.
Thank you.
Peace Officer Memorial Day is a very important day for law enforcement officers but for the public. I attended the funeral for the two Wataga County deputies, and as I sat there for about 15 sheriffs, we all reflected on how we pray every night and every day that that's not us that's having to go tell a family that their son or daughter has been murdered while trying to help somebody. I want you to think about that. A police officer, EMS personnel, fire personnel, we're there to help, but nowadays we get attacked, we get killed. Nowadays, we're looked as the enemy. Do you wonder why we have a hard time finding people willing to wear this badge? It's because a certain section, section of our public has convinced people that we're bad men and women. Nothing could be further from the truth. That is a bold lie, and we need you citizens to stand with us, because I know the majority of the citizens of this Gaston County support us and believe in us and know that we're not bad men and women. But the men and women that wear the badge right now, they need to hear that from you. They need to feel that love from you, because if we don't change, you may wake up one morning and there's no one left wearing the badge. So I beg you, I beseech you to tell your friends and neighbors that we, as a community, and I've been in this community all my life, need to stand up with our law enforcement, our EMS, and our firemen, because they're the ones that go in when you run. They're the ones that come to save you when you need saving, or they're the ones that change your tire on the side of the road. So I beseech you and beg you again, pray for us, take care of us when you can. And every time you see that ambulance with the red light and siren on, a fire truck with the siren on, the highway patrol car, the deputy car, the police car, close your eyes and say a small prayer, because they may not go home that night, just as those two Wataga County deputies didn't go home that night. Thank you for honoring law enforcement, gentlemen.
Chief Ramey couldn't be here this evening, but on behalf of the county police, the men and women of law enforcement all across Gaston County, we appreciate the continued support that we've had from the Board of Commissioners and Dr. Eagle and her leadership team. This last year's been a big challenge for all of us. Law enforcement was very much in that. The pandemic that we've all had to endure and then calls for social change and the assaults on law enforcement that have taken place over the year. The support of the community is very vital, as the sheriff said, and we appreciate that and we appreciate the support we've gotten from you, so thank you.
Next up, Commissioner Brown has several proclamations that he'll do in order.
At this time, I'd call Officer Ron Robinson and his family up. Anyone here with the Gaston County PD? Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll take Commissioner's duty here. I'm going to go off script a little bit for a friend. Come closer. Go up here. Kelly, come on up here with the kids.
The kids may be scared of you.
That's all right. First of all, I want to let everybody know that tonight you've seen heroes and you've seen a lot of different things, but I want to tell you, Ron Robinson is exemplary of what we looking for in law enforcement. I'll never forget the first day I walked into the gym, obviously down at the county police, he laughed at me, but he was always the first one there and the last one to leave whenever we'd see him, and he always made sure that he said hello. And he was a, "You're a great officer." I'm going to tell you that. But so much for that, your wife put up with so much because she works in the ER, and she puts up with a lot too, and that's a, that's a servant family right there. And when you're raising children and doing the things you guys do and what you've done, thank you to both of you, because it means a lot to me. Whereas Master Police Officer Ronald D. Robinson retired from the Gaston County Police Department on February 1st, 2021 after serving 26 years with Gaston County. And whereas Master Police Officer Ronald D. Robinson has requested that he be rewarded, awarded his Service Sidearm Glock Model 45 and badge worn during his service, and that the Gaston County Police Department pursuant of General Statute 20-187-2 and the Board Resolution 259 dated October 27th, 1983. Officer Robinson started his career in Charlotte and has put in 26 years with Gaston County. He has worked patrol, five years in vice in narcotics, 11 years as an SRO, 18 years as an MEU, 20 years as an honor guard, and 24 years ERT and SWAT, and 18 years on boat patrol. During his SRO time at Hunter Huss, he got the name of Robocop, obviously because of the stilt to Zeke. We won't be talking about the bald head because he lost all his hair during that. But Ron was an exemplary person, although his years with Gaston County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commissioners, the badge worn by Officer Robinson and his service sidearm Glock Model 45, serial number to be declared surplus equipment. By the badge worn by Officer Robinson to be given to him in remembrance of his service with Gaston County Police Department. The service sidearm Glock Model 45 be permanently retired of the Gaston County Police Department offered him at the, at the ripe $1 price tag. The Chief of the Gaston County Police Department is directed to award to Master Police Officer Robinson with his service sidearm and badge as specified and worn for him during his service for Gaston County. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statutes and policies of this board, be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses their sincere gratitude and dedicated service to Master Police Officer Officer Ronald D. Robinson and wishes him the best in his retirement. This to be adopted on the 25th day of May, 2021. Ron, it's been a good run, and I'll miss you dearly because no matter time, when I go out to the fishing docks and they're coming in on a late night, and I see Ron and he knows he has to go home, but he'll stand and talk to me for an hour or so just to let me know it's okay today. So thank you for your service. Kelly, thank you for allowing him to us for a long time, and I'm telling you, it means a lot, my brother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you get to speak after Chief Jensen.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, Commissioners. I think tonight we've heard the absolute worst we can face in law enforcement, and now we get to hear a little bit about some of the best we face in law enforcement, the successful retirement of somebody that's dedicated their life, their career, basically the majority of their life to what they do, serving others. I spoke to Ron earlier today, and we talked about what it was like to have a 30-year career in law enforcement, and he said it actually goes by in a blink of an eye. When I speak to the young officers that come to our department, I tell them, "You're not going to save the world, but go out there and make the difference in one person's life. Change one person's life for the better, and you'll be a success." I can tell you, in 30 years serving the citizens of Gaston County, Ron's made a difference in plenty of lives in this county. He's done an absolutely amazing job for us. Ron, on behalf of Chief Ramey and all the men and women of the Gaston County Police Department, it's my honor to give you your sidearm and your badge.
Thank you. I'm not as long-winded as Commissioner Brown, but I want to thank you for recognizing me tonight. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Gaston County. I'm very proud of the dedication that I have given to the Gaston County Police. It's, it's a very difficult time for police right now, and in this time, they need your support more than they ever have, so thank you.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank y'all. Congratulations.
Congratulations, buddy.
Thank you, and once again, congratulations, Ron.
Thanks, sir.
Up again, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would Ms. Karen Creach of the Adult Care Supervisor come and join me at the podium, please? After a long day's work, you get to come over here, right? Thank you for your dedication and service. Come closer, please. Whereas older adults have Whereas, older adults have built resilience and strength over their lives through success, failures, joys, and difficulties. These stories, life lessons, and contributions help support and inspire others. During this Older Americans Month, we celebrate the strength of older adults with special emphasis on the power of connection and engagement in building stronger communities. And whereas, Gaston County's older Americans deserve recognition for the ways they give back to the community in volunteering, serving their neighborhoods, building connections, and advocating to improve the lives of older adults and future generations. Whereas, older Americans have faced extreme isolation with the onset of the pandemic. And as we move forward, we are more aware of the negative impacts loneliness and isolation can have on the health of overall well-being, and this should lead to us to ensure that older Americans stay connected to activities, relationships, and support positive health. Whereas, we should expand opportunities to engage older Americans supporting other overall health and vitality by maintaining their involvement in community and social activities. Whereas, promoting independence, inclusion, participation for older Americans enriches the entire community through shared experience, wisdom, and talents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioner recognizes the valuable contributions made by Gaston County's older American, proclaims the month of May 2021 as Older Americans Month, this to be adopted on the 25th day of May. Ms. Creach, please. Thank you so much for what you do for our community right now.
Thank you. I appreciate you for recognizing Older Americans Month. Every May, the administration of Community Living leads our nation's observance to Older American Month. As the Commissioner said, the theme for this year is Communities of Strength. We know that older adults have built resilience, strength over their lives throughout successes, failures, joys, and difficulties. Their stories and contributions help to support and inspire others. The Older Americans Month, we celebrate the strength of older adults and the aging network with special emphasis on the power of connection and engagement in building stronger communities. In 2020, the pandemic hit the world like none ever seen in our lifetime. Many of our programs that were in place to assist older Americans had to change the way they delivered services. The Gaston County Adult and Aging Department faced the challenge of assisting the elderly in the community while keeping them safe. Our department quickly came together to implement activities to meet the need. Meetings and programs that occurred in person, such as the Caregiver Support Group and our adult daycare programs, moved to virtual sessions. Other departments transitions to delivering meals to ensure that seniors receive much-needed food. The department utilized COVID funding to purchase personal protective equipment and other supplies, pay bills, and support individuals and caregivers. Essential adult and aging staff members continue to work in the community to make sure that individuals were safe. Well-checked calls occurred to offer resources and supports. On top of the response to the pandemic, today, the department was busy implementing strategies to ensure that the recent gas shortage did not affect support to seniors. Finally, yet important, seniors did their part to keep communities safe. They wore their mask, they social-distanced, and learned new technology to connect to others while staying at home. When the vaccine was available, thousands of older Americans in Gaston County called the COVID vaccine line to schedule their shot. We build and show strength, not only by bold acts, but also by small ones on a day-to-day basis. In our community, older adults are the key source of our strength. The Department of Health and Human Services will continue to follow the example of the resilient older Americans to achieve our mission to provide senior livability and support, even if we have to ride bikes or walk to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kegger.
Be very careful where you wander.
Nobody caught that, but...
Well, I think everybody caught it.
It's like a pandemic. Would Calvin Vaughn, Mr. McDaniel, Attorney Shards from Child Welfare, please join me
Start calling him Chuckles. Chuckles the clown.
This is your month. Come on up. Closer, closer. Y'all know how this works. Get paid more when you get closer. All right. Whereas, over 17,000 children in foster care in North Carolina and over 400 children in Gaston County who depend on foster parents, family members, volunteers, mentors, policymakers, child welfare professionals, and community members to help them find permanent homes and connections. Whereas, foster care is irreplaceable resource for keeping children safe in temporary circumstances and providing stable stability, direction, comfort, and one of our community's most vulnerable populations. Whereas, children in foster care continue to face challenges even more pronounced by the impact of the pandemic and activities that provide stability, structure, such as schools, sports, and church. Social worker, foster parents, and dedicated community members work tirelessly to assure that they have safe, secure, and stable homes. Whereas, we honor those committed individuals who open their homes to children to provide a warm and nurturing environment, spaces to encourage, promote healing, and secure place to live and grow. And whereas, our community across all aspects of faith-based nonprofit, corporate businesses, volunteer, and professional organizations continue to support individuals and families who have been chosen to be foster parents. And whereas, dedicated child welfare professionals and community partners to achieve permanency for children through reunification with birth parents, kinship, care, adoption, or legal guardianship. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the month of May 2021 as Foster Care Awareness Month and extends its gratitude and great appreciation to all foster parents, family members, volunteers, mentors, and child well-care professionals in Gaston County, this to be adopted on the 25th day of May 2021. Please, thank you so much for what you guys do. You have the job that nobody wants, but we promise, thank you so much for the caring and time you put into it.
Hello. My name is Julie Murphy, and I want to thank you all for giving us this proclamation. I am not only a social worker, but I am a foster parent and an adoptive parent. And I can honestly say that foster parents do some of the hardest work and are often unnoticed. And I think that making May Foster Parent Appreciation Month is only just a little bit of what they deserve, because they do the hard job. They are the ones that are, after everyone's gone home and everybody's, you know, wrapped their day up, they're the ones that are hugging these kids that are crying because they miss their moms and dads. And they're the ones that are, you know, comforting them when they feel like no one cares about them, or they're not good enough, or they're not worthy of love or a family. And foster parents are the ones that sacrifice so much of their life for children who they didn't give birth to. And, you know, often, you hear bad stories about foster parents in the news and in the media. If you hear about foster parents, you hear about some not-so-good things. But I'm here to tell you that we have some phenomenal foster parents in Gaston County. We have foster parents like Mike and Shonda Hibbs, who have fostered over, gosh, I guess now, 50 kids, and they have adopted multiple kids, and they just keep giving because their hearts are for, you know, healing kids' hearts. And that's another thing that people don't understand about foster parents, is they give little pieces of their heart to every child that comes into their home in hopes that that helps heal that child's heart. And that is something that nobody else can do, quite like a foster parent. And they love them until they can either go home and be with their biological families, or they love them forever, as is the case with two of my kids that came into my home. So, this is a great honor, and we appreciate it. Also, if you would like to foster, it's fosteradopt@gastongov.com. Just, you know, send me an email, and we'll get you an application. We need foster parents very badly. Again, that's fosteradopt@gastongov.com, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kegger, Julie and I did some videos with the Health and Human Services to take away some of the stigmas of what happens during adoption, how to adopt. So if anybody has any of those questions, they can also, like I said, call Julie, or they can watch those videos that we did, I guess that's it, Health and Human Services on Facebook and also some other things. But those videos, I think it was like a five-part series we did, on trying to make sure that any questions someone had, we made sure we could answer those and those questions that did that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Up next, Commissioner Hovis is here to proclaim the week of May 16 through the 22nd as Emergency Medical Service Week in our county.
I don't see Mr. Lampier with us, but if anyone from Emergency Medical is here, you're welcome to join me. Our emergency services director is welcome to join me as well, if you'd like. Kevin doesn't get up in the spotlight, but I'm going to make him come up.
That's a nice tie, by the way, Kevin.
And folks, just, we've heard from a lot of individual departments and people who served Gaston County tirelessly. We are blessed to have individuals who are in our employ, who touch so many lives in such a positive way. And Emergency Medical Services is no different. This is, like I said, Mr. Kegger said, this is for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, Emergency Medical Services is an essential public safety service. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Service system consists of physicians, nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement officers, telecommunicators, and a host of others. And whereas, the members of the Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide life-saving service and care to those who need it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, Emergency Medical Services personnel engage in countless hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills and credentials. And whereas, the residents and visitors of Gaston County benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals. And whereas, EMS is the front line of the COVID pandemic treatment and transporting for our most vulnerable people every day. Whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of the Emergency Medical Services providers, perhaps now more than ever, by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through the 22nd of 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Gaston County, and call upon all citizens to observe this period with appropriate events, programs, and acknowledgement of these fine individuals for the service they render our citizens every day. This to be adopted the 25th day of May 2021.
Hey, good evening, all. Thank you very much. On behalf of the county's EMS system, I'm proudly to accept this, and I'll make sure that they get that. So as Commissioner Hovis mentioned, any EMS system is very important, anywhere from, it starts all the way from the citizens, rendering first aid, through activating the 911 system and the telecommunicators, through the first responders and the fire service or the rescue squads. And then, the final stage of that is the paramedics getting on scene and rendering critical care, whether it be in a trauma or an acute onset of a stroke or heart attack or something of that nature, some medical malady before that individual can get to the hospital. If it was not for the EMS, then I'm sure the outcome in a lot of these instances would be worse. Matter of fact, on-scene medical care now, in a lot of instances, the paramedics can do just as much in the scene, out on the scenes as they can in a hospital to stabilize someone, not necessarily in a trauma situation, but definitely in an acute medical or medical malady. And as he mentioned, this past year, they have caught it for all aspects of dealing with many patients frontline on COVID, all the way to the vaccine clinic. So they have done a yeoman's work all the time, but definitely in this last year, and I'll make sure that this is given to Mark and his staff and the comments relate to them tomorrow.
Certainly. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hovis. It's with great pleasure that the County Board of Commissioners honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, and skills and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards or commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizens' involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. And I'd like to recognize, and we will be sending certificates of appreciation to Nancy Hutchins, Animal Care Enforcement Board, Brian DiOrio, Angela Garland, Gerald Lisca, Amy Parker, Penny Thrower, of serving on the Family Advisory Board, William Sein, the Planning Board, and Judy Caldwell, Travel and Tourism Board. Next up is Citizen Recognition, and I don't believe we have anyone signed up, but I'm going to take about three minutes to just, I want to read some notes into the minutes. And Don, you've got all these emails already, so you don't have to type. And I want to thank our county attorney, Mr. Sink, for researching this item on behalf of the board, which goes directly to the decorum of the meetings that we've had over the last year and a half or so. And I'm just going to read, I'm not going to ad lib or anything like that, but I do want to take about a minute and a half or two minutes to read it into the record. And going forward, it'll be my job to enforce these, if the board adopts a resolution that Mr. Sink has brought forward. During recent public comment periods, specifically Citizen Recognition, certain individuals have conducted themselves in ways that are rude, disrespectful, and out of control at times. While there are legal limits on what we can do to stop this as a board, the bottom line is this. The board does not have to put up with anything and everything that is said from the podium or the audience during Citizen Recognition. The legal parameters of public recognition is to hold at least one public period per month. We always hold two. The board may adopt reasonable rules governing the conduct of the public comment period, including in pertinent part, providing for the maintenance of order and decorum in the conduct of a hearing. The three-minute time limitation must be administered equally across the board. It is important to stay content neutral when ruling speakers out of order. This does not mean speakers may ignore adopted rules of decorum, with decorum being defined as behavior in keeping with good taste and propriety. The recommended steps that we've received from our attorney is, first, consider adopting the draft rules of decorum, which I will read into the minutes in just a minute. It is important for the chairman to enforce the rules of decorum consistently and equally from the dais. It is important for the county to publish any adopted rules on our county website, have a reminder sheet at the podium for each and every speaker to see, and for the chairman himself to read the rules at the start of every public comment period as prepared by the clerk or the county attorney, or in this case, both. Have the IT staff cut off the podium microphone once three minutes expires. If they were to do this for every speaker, no one could say in good faith that one speaker had more time than another. It will still be up to the chairman, however, to ensure that the speaker steps away from the podium once his or her time is up. The rules of the decorum for a public comment, public input and participation are of great importance to the County Board of Commissioners. While North Carolina general statutes require that county governing boards provide for public comment at least once a month at the regular meeting, the Gaston County Board has chosen to provide this opportunity twice per month during the Citizen Recognition segment of the board's work session and regular meeting agendas. North Carolina General Statute 153A-52.1 also allows the Board of Commissioners to adopt reasonable rules which govern the conduct of the public comment period, including rules... comment period, including ru- rules to maintain order and decorum. The rules of decorum set forth below are intended to be content neutral and ensure that this part of the agenda is conducted in a civil and orderly manner. One, each speaker is allocated three minutes to speak. No public comment shall extend beyond one hour unless the chairman or preceding officer elects in his or her discretion to extend the overall time period. A speaker may not share or relinquish any remaining time they have not used to another speaker. Speakers are only allowed to speak one time during public comment period. A person may speak only if they have signed up to speak in accordance with the board's procedures. Speaker substitutions at the meeting are not permitted. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks and/or threats directed towards county staff, elected board members, or other members of the public. And that's, they, right there is one of the main areas we've gone awry in the past, and uh, uh, that's something that I feel strong, strongly about that we address. Speakers shall address the chairman with any public comments, comments, questioning, jeering, or other interruptions for the audience, from the audience are not allowed. Speakers shall likewise not address or respond to members of the audience. Speakers should not expect board members to comment on or respond to their comments uh directly during the meeting. The chairman or presiding officer may, however, request the county manager's office to follow up with the speaker after the meeting or provide additional information uh at a later date, and that is something that we've always done for as long as I can remember. The chairman or presiding officer has the authority to enforce the rules of decorum. Failure to obey these rules may result in the forfeiture of the remaining speaking time and, and possible criminal charges. Individuals who engage uh or repeat violations may be asked to leave the meeting. Speakers and members of the audience should note the following North Carolina General Statute, and I quote, "A person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts an official meeting, and who, upon being directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer, willfully refuses to leave the meeting, is guilty of a class-two misdemeanor." And that again is North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point seventeen. And just two more short paragraphs. Uh, and this we received, I believe, yesterday from uh Mr. Sink, the county attorney. I asked him to uh define what a class-two misdemeanor is and what the penalties might be, and it entails, entails punishment-wise, since state law does state that an individual who resists leaving a public meeting after being warned by the chairman uh is said to be guilty of committing a class-two misdemeanor. In short, someone found guilty of a class-two misdemeanor is looking at anywhere from one to sixty days in jail, probation, or community service, and a maximum fine of one thousand dollars. Uh, so I just wanted to take the opportunity during Citizen Recognition, which we don't have anyone tonight, to uh just make the public aware and uh that we will ask the attorney to bring forth a resolution to adopt some form of decorum for our meetings. And I will, after that said, I will ask if there's any comments, anybody wanna add anything or delete anything? All right. Next up, uh, we have three presentations this evening. Our first presentation is Mr. Kevin Gordon, once again, the Volunteer Fire Department Budget Requests.
Mr. Chairman, before Kevin speaks, I, I ask for this to happen, just because we've had so many years that uh, the Fire Advisory Board, they go and they work hard, and they, they've been getting, and I'm gonna tell you, if you guys haven't seen anybody as an ED Director to really work hard, that man right there has done it. And I'm, I'm not ashamed to sit there and say, brother, thank you for your hard work. These guys really worked hard. But I want them to come, just to give the board a presentation. That way, if you have any objections or anything, they can solve them now before we get to the meeting. But that's just why, so Kevin, thank you for coming tonight, pal.
Thank you very much. Chairman Keiger, board, Dr. Eagle, um, members of the audience, uh, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. So I wanted to have a presentation, I'll try to get through this as quick as possible. Uh, there's a few technical points which may take a little bit, but first I wanted to uh recognize two individuals that are here tonight. So Barry Wilson, Barry, where's Barry? Barry serves as the Chair of the Fire Advisory Board, and Jeff Hovis. Jeff is the Vice Chair, and Jeff Hovis also serves as the President of the County Fire Association. So a few points I'd make that you don't have on your slides. So volunteer fire service compresses about sixty-seven percent of the firefighters in the United States. So across the country, there are about one point one, uh, one million firefighters across the US, and seven hundred forty-five thousand of those serving the volunteer fire capacity. The majority of the fire departments in the United States are also volunteer across the United States, there's twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and five. Fire agencies, nineteen thousand one hundred and twelve of those are fully volunteer, five thousand two hundred and six are mostly volunteer, and the remaining fifty-three hundred are either career or mostly career. Uh, the total donated by volunteer time save lo- local jurisdictions approximately forty-six point nine billion dollars a year uh in local government savings, as estimated by the NFPA or the National Fire Protection Agency. Roughly sixty percent of the firefighters that are killed in line of duty are volunteer firefighters. Volunteer firefighters and emergency medical technicians across the country meet national and our state training guidelines. Uh, we have a, a robust community college here that, that provides a great service in that. The cost to train and equip a firefighter can exceed twenty thousand dollars, uh, if you, if you take into consideration all their equipment and the time invested in that. Some other points that most citizens may not know, every twenty-four seconds, a fire department in the United States responds somewhere to some type of incident. Three thousand six hundred and fifty-five civilians are lost on an annual basis as a result of fire. About seventy-four percent of those occur in residential structures. And the direct property loss for fires is estimated to be about twenty-five point six billion dollars. And also while preparing for this, I found something that was quite interesting. The University of Tennessee uh Institute of Public Safety also does a study for volunteer firefighters. They call the value of volunteer firefighters, have been doing this since nineteen eighty. So the current hourly rate as assessed, or as they assess with the research for volunteer firefighters is twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents for twenty nineteen. That's what they value uh their service at. So if you have before you the presentation there, so uh, the first slide, so the adopted levy for last year and fiscal year twenty twenty-one was almost five point three million dollars. The proposed levy for this year is just south of six point eight million. That's an increase of just less than one point four million. You'll see the adopted average tax rate. Now, there's individual tax rates you'll see in this presentation shortly, but the average adopted tax rate for last year was eight point four cent, and the proposed average tax rate across all the tax districts this year would be ten point one three, uh, ten point one three cent. The needs of the fire service, and this is just global comments here, uh, from all the agencies and their, the packages that they presented to the Fire Advisory Board. Uh, so the needs of fire service in general terms is provide adequate staffing and maintain to approve response times, replace agent equipment and apparatus, maintain equipment, apparatus, and fire stations, replace and or renovate fire stations, provide training to retain skills and enhance those uh volunteer firefighters that I spoke about, train and equip personnel for routine rescue incidents, and preserve and continue to improve fire insurance ratings. Some things that we're gonna work on in the future as far as deliverables, uh, they have already participated in a system-wide financial audit, uh, and that will be routine now. It's on an annual basis as compared to uh every other year in the past. The Fire Advisory Board will also lead the development of a strategic plan for the volunteer fire departments across the county, and this will also identify needs both short-term, midterm, and long-term, and also help to stabilize the funding for those agencies as well. Also, there's a review of the contracts currently being, uh, the con- fire contracts are currently being revised to bring them in line with current best practices, and hopefully soon look, soon those will be before you to adopt the template for that. So what does this mean for Gaston County? So just these numbers here, I gave you some countrywide or nationwide numbers before, but these are more germane to Gaston County. So of volunteer fire agencies of seventeen departments, there's five hundred and forty-four volunteer firefighters. Calls for service last year, or last fiscal year, was seven thousand two hundred thirty-nine. And then we also looked at the peer county tax rates. These were in eighteen and twenty, so the peer rate uh two years ago was eight point four cent, and then the peer rate for fiscal year twenty twenty was just, just slightly over nine point five cent. So now, we're to the individual requests. So the first one up is AgCenter. You'll see what AgCenter's adopted rate and, and adopted levy was at the top, and then this year the board is proposing the twelve cent or two point eight cent increase, and their funding would increase to seven hundred and three thousand and ten dollars. Here, the individual needs for AgCenter, uh, they needed to address uh additional staffing to, to support weekends and remain consistent for those Monday through Friday, and actually this will improve response times. Before much-needed maintenance on the fire station, place some equipment that is needed for safety members, AEDs, we spoke about EMS earlier, that would support first responders, hose turnout gear, just the routine things there as you see. And then also manage increased costs of services such as insurance, fuel, utilities, and things of that nature. So Alexis, you'll see the top part there, also for twenty-one, what the adopted rate was in the levy. Uh, the board is recommending the two point seven cent increase uh for Alexis, which would bring their Gaston County budget to three hundred fifty-six thousand and two seventy-one. Again, it's staffing changes. Uh, will continue to evolve over the next five years. Um, there's, Alexis is not planning any major, major capital expenditures. Uh, they do have apparatus replacement planned, and one unique thing about Alexis, Alexis sits on the county line, so uh sixty percent of their territory is in Lincoln County, and you'll see there what their Lincoln County budget consists of. Community, again, you see their twenty-one rate and levy. We're proposing a two point two cent increase. Five hundred twenty-seven thousand five thirty-five will be their proposed levy. Again, uh, their, uh, community's not proposing any drastic changes to their staffing model. They did restructure their loans to save, um, so they were very sound fiduciaries in that aspect. They restructured their loans to save, uh, and some lower interest rate or save money from that aspect. They're very active in providing for protective clothing, developments of replacement schedule where they can replace their safety equipment on a, on a routine or consistent basis. They also plan several equipment and tool replacements, and one of those is a total replacement of their SCBA, which is their self-contained breathing apparatus. Kraus is the Lincoln County Fire Department, they have territory in Gaston. Uh, Kraus did not ask for a budget, however, increase, however, when we were going through the process, we realized that there was some level of regression in some of the uh taxing portions of their budget, so they were uh in line to receive a reduction. So the board is action, is actually recommending a point, a, a, a very small increase to make sure that their overall budget does not regress and that their funding remains flat for this fiscal year. Crowders, Crowders, the chart's a little different for Crowders, and the reason for that is Crowder services two fire districts. They serve a Chapel Grove, which was an existing fire district, which is a service district, and they also serve Gastonia, which was also a fire district, and it's a voted-in district. So they serve two, what was at one point two fire districts, so that's a merged agency. You'll see what their increase is there, it's three point one cent, and so the, probably the best way to look at this is look all the way to the last column, their total budget would be just over a million dollars, and then you can look back at the two, uh, so that's distributed equally over the two districts. Uh, so one thing that they're adding is staffing at the Station Three, which is down off of three twenty-one near Home Light. Uh, this would six personnel to that. This helped, this would help to stabilize the part-time, replace the part-time staffing there with full-time staffing. That, uh, that's a new station that was built without a sprinkler system, so this will, there's funding here, uh, been proposed to uh equip that station with, or renovate the station for a sprinkler system, which will bring it into compliance with the state building code and fire code. Um, they also have a plan to replace their SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus and replace an aged tanker, an agent-out tanker, and they're also uh looking to acquire land along the Highway seventy-four, eighty-five corridor to um build Station Two or replace their Station Two. East Gaston, East Gaston, you see at the top is their current numbers. They are requesting, and the board's recommending, a two point six cent, or two point six cent tax increase, which would take their funding to five hundred and forty-three thousand three ninety. They're also gonna increase their staffing, redeployment of their staffing to handle calls during peak times, create a volunteer incentive program, try to garner volunteers and maintain the volunteer system as long as possible, replace a piece of agent apparatus, which will also help in lowering insurance rating, and, and they have several equipment and tool replacements planned that, which will also aid and benefit with maintenance of their ISO or insurance rating as well. Hughes Pond, you see theirs, they ask for no requests, no increase, so theirs is flat. Same for Lowell. Lucy Riverbend, request was three point two cent, four hundred sixty-six thousand two seventy-one, which the board is recommending. This is also to add additional staffing, as you see outlined there. Renovation of the current existing station and replace equipment, including thermal imaging cameras, fire hoses, SCBA, underwater communication equipment to help with their dive team, which the last one speaks to for along the Cataba River and Mountain Island Lake for the dive team and underwater rescue and body recoveries. New Hope, New Hope has had a request and a one point three cent tax increase, which will take their proposed level to a levy to five hundred and forty thousand two oh two. Again, this is addressing uh personnel staffing needs to enhance their hours between eight and eight PM. Also, we increased the pay rate from ten dollars to twelve dollars. I make an interesting point there, the majority of these agencies are paying ten or twelve dollars for their minimum wage. They are also private agencies, they are not public agencies, so if and when the federal government were to increase the minimum wage as it progresses that and gets to the fifteen dollar amount, then these agencies are gonna have a substantial increase in salaries or benefits, or salaries to those part-time personnel, because they'll be required to meet that minimum wage. They also plan to replace a compression fill station for SCBA, provide an inflatable boat and raft for water emergencies, provide a set of struts, which will enhance their capability to lift and stabilize heavy objects uh in vehicles, and they also have a plan to replace a pe- a piece of agent apparatus, uh, which will also help to maintain or lower their insurance rating. North Gaston asked for no flat, uh, no increase, so their budget is flat. Again, here, what they do is they cover two districts, the High Shoal and the old Long Shoals or South Fork Fire District, which is also voted-in district, so uh their, their budget is flat for this year. Randlow asked for a point oh three increase, a nominal increase of three thirty-four, uh, and they too are gonna address staffing needs and enhance their uh pay rate from ten to twelve, replace some of equipment and maintain apparatus station, uh, and upkeep, their upkeep in the station will be minor for a couple of years, 'cause they just moved into a new building. South Point requests a one point four cent increase, that'll take their level to three seventy, fund, proposed levy to three seventy-six nine seventy-one. This will address some staffing needs, and you see the way they deploy their staffing there. This will help meet the minimum requirement level for NFPA. It also will construct a small training facility to aid though, uh, in the training of their personnel, requires, uh, replace a piece of agent apparatus and several other tool and equipment replacements that are needed to maintain their current level of service. Spencer Mountain has a planned building, uh, project on, uh, uh, soon to be, and they're requesting a one cent tax increase, which will take their proposed levy to four fifteen two thirty-five. Um, with the exception of the Mammoth Project building a fire station, that's all they really had proposed, other than just maintaining their current level of equipment and replacing a few agent pieces of equipment to maintain their ISO rating. Tri-Nada covers two and operates out of two fire stations. You guys may remember, it used to be Chestnut Ridge as well, so they cover both the Tri-Nada and Chestnut Ridge, two stations. So you'll see that they're asking for a three point nine percent, or three point nine cent increase, and their total budget will increase to four ninety-one six twenty-one. They're gonna change their staffing for twenty-four hours, seven days a week, add additional staffing on the weekends with qualified personnel, renovate the legacy station at Chestnut Ridge at a cost of roughly seventy-some thousand dollars, replace a piece of agent equipment, and purchase large diameter hose that supply line, that's what they catch hydrants with and supply water to the apparatus, and they're also gonna replace some agent-out thermal imaging cameras, uh, which will aid them in finding uh, uh, lost our civilians in burning buildings. Union Road, uh, one point one cent tax increase, four hundred and forty-eight thousand one seventy-five. Addressing staffing needs on the weekends, replace their PPE, our personal protective equipment on a replacement schedule, much as we talked about with community. They also have some replacements, a scheduled replacement for some SCBA. Gap Insurance may be new to the board, I'm not sure how much you may know about that. So basically what that is, if you look there where it says maximum weekly compensation rate of a thousand one hundred and two dollars, that's what the state's maximum weekly compensation rate is for workers' compensation. Volunteer firefighters are figured at two-thirds of that, or sixty-six and two-thirds of that. So for a volunteer firefighter, if they, if they worked a career somewhere else and were serving as a volunteer firefighter, and they were injured, uh, and is incapacitated and can no longer work, workers, workers comp would only pay them seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. So let's say for an example- So let's say for an example, if they had a salary of $1,500 a week, they would be now making less of half what their salary is. So the gap insurance makes a difference between that and it gets closer to what their salary is. They also plan to buy some struts, airbags, and other objects to help lift heavy objects and things of that nature. Waco is the Cleveland County Department. They have some district that is west and north of Cherryville. 1.4 cent tax increase. This is also to address some staffing and make sure that it's funded properly to maintain staffing from 7:00 to 7:00 Monday through Friday and on the weekend. They too also plan to have a replacement schedule of turnout gear on a consistent basis, replace some minor equipment updates. And also, they maintain a heavy rescue with appropriate equipment and train personnel in western Gaston County. So let me stop there. That's all of the departments. Are there any questions to this point?
Kevin, can you go back and just talk just real quick over? I think it's about a 2.2 cent average, I think is what we were talking about. But it also helps that some of these places, they can lower their ISO rate, which will include saving money. Everybody looks at it as it's, it's, it's a fee, but it's going to end up being the money saver because of the ISO rating.
Yeah, so I have a chart. If I can, sir, let me figure this out, finish this out, and I'll get to that chart, which I think illustrates that. So this next one is just a five-year look at the tax rates of where they're at from 2017, fiscal year 2017, to all the way to the proposed. Those highlighted in yellow are the ones that are asking for an increase. Kraus is, Kraus didn't ask for an increase, but we're recommending a small increase to make sure that their funding is flat. And then the ones are in white, which is North Gaston, Hughes Pond, and Lowell did not ask for an increase. You'll see back in 2019, 2020, revow the tax rates went down. And you can see what they are over time. So speaking of ISO, I thought that that may be wise to talk about that. So ISO or Insurance Services Office, now the North Carolina Department issue insurance rates any fire departments that cover a territory or cover personnel, citizens of less than 100,000. So they're going to rate all the, all the departments within the county. You'll see the chart there. So these ratings go anywhere from 1 to 10, 10 being the worst. I mean, essentially no fire coverage. In the state of North Carolina, to be recognized as a rated fire department, it must be a minimum of Class 9. One would be the best. So just an excerpt of the chart there. You can see across the top of what it means based on the value of the home. And then also by the class over on the left-hand side, 10 down through 5. We stopped at 5. And the reason you stop at 5 is in residential structures, there's no break below Class 5. Technically, in North Carolina, there's no break below Class 6 with the North Carolina Rating Bureau. So this is a true chart for ISO in North Carolina. You can just strike, strike off the bottom one for residential structures. So Commissioner Brown, one, one point that you would make there. So if you just look at that last bullet, so for a property owner that owns a house of 100,000, so if the, if the fire department lowered their rating from a Class 9 to a Class 5, based on this chart, it'd be $433. So go to that same column and you can figure from 9 to 6. So what is it, 1, 407? So it'd be 407 if it went from a Class 9 to a Class 6. However, in full fairness, there's some other things that go, that take into effect. And it's not just the ISO rating. So I thought it'd be fair to look at the next chart. So the type of construction, the age, the proximity to the property to a fire hydrant, and the amount of coverage and deductible also are factors into figuring a insurance premium cost and not just the ISO rating itself. So this is what the departments look like. So the very, the column all the way to the right where it says current rating is where they currently sit as far as their insurance rating. The last time that they were inspected. And then to the left of that is the previous rating. So, so this is, this chart's actually laid out to show that since the last inspection, they all have improved with the exception of Kramer, Denise Gaston, and they maintain. So there's two things about insurance ratings. One is acquiring it, and then two is maintaining it. It's as hard to maintain it sometimes as it is to acquire it. So, so it's really a two-pronged process there. So you see that most of those are in the realm of 5 and Class 6, right? Commissioner Brown, I think this speaks to the chart that you're talking about or an example of what you're talking about. So the way to read this chart, so on the left-hand side, you have your tax rates. So what we laid these out is just to show you the increase. So let's say for an example, you went from an 8 cent to a 9 cent, right? So that's a $1.25 increase in the property tax. But then if you look all the way over to the right-hand side, then that shows you what the value is for that compared to the fire, your property, if it was valued at $150,000 sitting in a Class 5 fire district. So that, that value of that rating is $522.96 to the good for the citizen, even, even after you take out the increased cost of the fire tax. A better example is to look at Class 6, so that's more of an average. That's where the, so if you averaged all the fire ratings, that's just about the place to look at. So this is probably a better example to look at. And then the next slide is also a Class 7 for those that are on the higher end. So this just shows the economic value of what that insurance rating means for, for when you talk about ISO rating, what, how that impacts the property owner, and then also the difference in the fire tax.
Mr. Gordon, I think Commissioner Worley has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But Kevin, just as you said, many factors go into figuring an ISO rating. And one of the largest is availability of water or hydrants. And that's, that's one of the largest factors, is correct?
That's correct.
Unless we, unless we, in a lot of these districts, unless we can put hydrants out there, they're going to have a hard time lowering their, their ISO rating from what it currently is.
Well, if I could speak to that. So if you go back to the chart where it says ISO rating impact on, so the chart that I gave, it had the four columns, you should see it now, right? So if you look at the right, so, so when I see those charts, so, so let's say for an example, let's pick Alexis. Alexis is a 790, right? So the 7 means that that's the, that's the, that is the rating that will be applied to all properties within their five-mile district. If hydrants, so there's, there's four different ways that a fire department can rate themselves, method 1, 2, 3, and 4. So all these districts have been rated either by method 3 or 4 because they don't have a middle number. So if, if they were rated by where, where the proximity to a hydrant mattered, that rating would say 79S9E. So they don't have the special rating in the, in the middle. So that means that all the districts have chose to be rated either method 3 or method 4, which takes that away. So what that means is the departments have performed to the state that they can haul water. So that's what that means. Before, if you looked at these, seven years ago, they would say 79S9E. What that means is everybody within 1,000 foot of a hydrant would have gotten a Class 7 on their insurance rating. Those that are more than 1,000 foot from a hydrant, but still less than five road miles, would have gotten a 9S. And then those, the 9E means that it's more than five road miles, but less than six road miles. That also doesn't necessarily mean that all these fire districts have property that are between five and six road miles. Because in order to get that designation, the county has to do that. They have to perform as a whole the ability to haul water. So all the fire departments associated as a 9E, even though only a portion of them will have territory, territory more than five road miles, but less than six. And ironically, Gaston was a pilot for that program. It was about 15 years ago.
Mr. Keiger?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out, and Kevin may have said it, in, in last year, after the revow, there was, they were all held to their number they had before the revow. I think this puts everybody pretty much revenue neutral, if I'm not mistaken, for what would have happened if it would have came last year, correct?
This puts them, without organic growth over two years, yes, this will put the districts about to where they were at before the fire rates were adjusted down for revow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In addition to the information that you've provided, Kevin, which is very, very good, there's two pieces I'd like to see. I'd like to see each district, the number of square miles that they cover, if they're broken into multiple units, those units being listed individually, and the population in their district that they serve. And that's a calculation I want to use for something different. I want to know what, what the cost is per service in each of those fire districts and see what are the outliers, what are the ones that are in the median bracket, and those types of things.
So let me clarify. So like for Tri-Nada, for example, so you're speaking, you want to see Tri-Nada and Chestnut Ridge.
There would be two line items. The square miles covered by Chestnut Ridge, the square miles covered by Tri-Nada proper. And the population in each of those areas.
Is that something you'd be able to email out to us?
Yeah, it may take a day or so to get that pulled together. But yeah, we can get to you. Yeah, that'll be easily acquired.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Kevin.
I just want to thank Commissioner Brown for his service on the Fire Advisory Board.
So noted, thank you. Mr. Peoples, I think you're up next. Michael Peoples, City Manager Gaston is going to present the Fuse District Economic Development Update to us this evening. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to take my mask off after a while. That feels good, I can breathe a little bit. Thanks for having me, Chairman, Commissioners, Dr. Eagle, Mr. County Attorney, sink. So I'll try to get this thing going here if I can.
There's some help right behind you.
All right, very good. All right. So I'll try to keep this fairly brief and very visual. This picture was taken from a drone looking westward from Fuse on Franklin Boulevard towards Crowder's Mountain and King's Mountain. That was probably three or four months ago. Pretty picture, huh? The one on the left is about, well, same, about the same age. And then the one on your right was what it was before. And if you have forgotten, this is the old Sears Building or Bill Dean's. And the Budget Inn is over there on your left, right here. And then the old Coca-Cola Building, and then Trenton Mill, and then the YMCA whenever it was still functional. It's the old Sears Building again. And then Budget Inn whenever we demoed the Sears Building. So that's been several years ago. And it's pretty easy to forget what that area looked like before some of the work had been done on Fuse. This is what we have now. There's a couple of pictures that you may recognize. I know some of you may have attended one of the Stuart Kramer baseball games over there at the Fuse already, or the Kingdom Men event that they had not long ago. And then maybe just drove by and checked out the, the streetscape and then the premium space that are in the bottom left and the bottom middle pictures. And that's all set up in the 4,000 square foot space that's above the field. Here are some other pictures of some of the streetscape work that the city has done in addition to all the work on the facility itself. This is from probably Second Base, right here, looking back towards that premium level. A lot of people ask about parking. Parking, not, not the biggest problem. I think it will become probably a bigger issue. But from that 10-minute walk radius you see, and just a little further out, more towards where we're at right now and where City Hall is and the County Admin Building, it's about 2,200 spaces that have been identified. So we have a private project working on Trenton Mill. Trenton Mill is one of the oldest mills in the entire county, I would imagine. It's over 105 years old. And this is the work that they're doing on that. They've started this work, as you've seen before, 84 residential units and about $25 million in investment in that facility itself. And that is scheduled to open up at the end of the year. We have Dirty Bull Brewing Company. They're located in Durham right now. This would be their second operation. They should begin work anytime now, hopefully be finished at the end of the year. And they're going to be investing about $2 million. And that's located right there on the corner of Main Avenue and Trenton. It's the barrel roof building of the old Coca-Cola building. All right, so the Coca-Cola building's been purchased. It's about 50,000 square feet, about four acres. And they have already started some of the demolition work, as you see in some of the pictures here. And estimated opening spring 2023. It may open in phases, probably will open in phases, along with the metal building over there to the, to the east. And total development costs right now are estimated to be about $10 million. All right, so this is a little bit more complicated. These are the parcels that were created out of building the actual facility. We wanted to make sure that the facility was on a very small footprint. And so out of that was created Parcel C, here, this purple parcel, Parcel B, which is the green, and then Parcel A, which is on Franklin. And then also, it's not really included on the sites where this little white triangle right here is underneath the scoreboard, behind the scoreboard. And using the building that is under the scoreboard now would be a restaurant space of about 6,000 square feet. So potential development range between $50 million and $100 million. These are some renderings of what that might look like. There's what I was talking about, the scoreboard. And then right now, you have this outdoor bar space right here. And then the restaurant that could be built over that and under the scoreboard. Here's another rendering of what some of that private development could look like on Parcel A and Parcel B. So the YMCA is still there. From what I understand, there's a contract to purchase that property right now. It's almost six acres. Right now, it's 42,000 square feet in a building, but probably set to be demolished. And this is what's been proposed. This is a very preliminary 200-unit apartment, $25 million worth of investment. And we'll be working with this developer as they're closing on the property and submitting plans. But this has just recently occurred in the last two or three weeks. And we're set to meet with them again coming up next week. This is across Norfolk Southern Track to the north. This is right across, if you're on Trenton and you intersect with Airline. This property was sold. Right now, it's on the market. You can purchase it if you would like to. It's a lot more than it was before. It's 2.21 acres. And right now, it is proposed for these apartments that you see in a rendering of in the bottom right, right here. So a potential investment of $25 million if it's about 160-plus units. Employment, so this is best guess, looking at all the different parcels whenever it's fully developed, somewhere between 400 and 500 employees. If you would like a job, they'll hire you right now. I know Commissioner Brown was talking about maybe calling a game or maybe running the scoreboard or something on his downtime. So be happy to have him out there and doing that. Maybe one of you can sing the National Anthem. I think they took auditions last weekend. So they probably need a few more people. Total investment, we're looking at total build-out. $137 million to $187 million if all of these things come true. So that would be all of the surrounding parcels for the existing Fuse site and all the ones that are already underway. Wanted to show you this because it's important, the work not only on the facility, but in the surrounding areas that may interest you. This is a view looking westward on Main Avenue. If you crossed over Chester right there on your left would be county property. And going down probably that entire block there on the left is County Police Department. So just looking at what might be. Another view of that. This is on Franklin, looking westward towards the Fuse facility, looking at what it may become. But it is a whole lot nicer than it once was. Just in the walk, looking west towards the gateway, towards the Fuse facility. Trenton Mill is on your right. And then what could happen in the future with private development. So this is one of my favorite ones. We have definitely improved our relationship with Norfolk Southern over the last four years in trying to make this improvement for safety. It's taken a long time to do this. This is what they call a silent crossing. And if you've been by there today, it was being milled. And they'll start asphalt paving hopefully tomorrow and Thursday and finish this project up. But it has taken a long time to get this done. But it has improved safety significantly and hopefully keep the conductors from having to, to blow that horn whenever they're going by because this is the last at-grade crossing before entering the affectionately known ditch right through town here. This is something that we're working on now. We have pre-construction meeting coming up in the next two weeks. We'll be under We'll be under construction soon, hopefully finished in October. And this is a Fuse Transit Center. And this is to your right what's being purchased or being constructed now. What's on your left is a proposed container yard, and we're working on that model right now, the design. So that's what's being constructed. That should be finished in October, and that will be a drop-off site dedicated for Lyft and Uber rides as well, and then also for the fixed route system in Gastonia for transit. And this is just some examples of what a container yard could look like. These are in Spartanburg, Kannapolis, Greenville, and I even threw one in there from DC from around where the Nationals play at, and that's this one in the top right. So it's not just a baseball stadium. A lot of people think that that's what was built, even though it will feature a professional baseball team. It will have other capabilities. All the linear sports can be played there. You see in that top-right picture, can have football, can have soccer, field hockey, rugby, everything that you can think of as far as a linear sport goes. And then also this stage. This stage has been purchased. That stage was deployed for the ribbon cutting, and then that stage will be deployed again for several concerts whenever the owners of the team will be able to schedule those out. So we hope you can come to the season, buy some season tickets. There's still some on sale. It'll be 120-game season this year, 60 home games, actually 61 home games. There'll be an exhibition game coming up on the 23rd, and then the first real home opener will be on the 27th of May. So what, two weeks away from opening game? So that's a lot of baseball. And personally, I hope to get on the road maybe and check them out, playing in High Point and Lexington, Kentucky. There's probably a good reason for me to go up there and see the Honey Hunters play in Kentucky. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. That's just an overview of the Fuse facility itself and all the economic development surrounding the facility.
Thank you, Michael, for the presentation. Any comments, questions, Mr. Philbeck?
I just want to say it looks great. My office is right around the corner, and that whole area has improved. Just talking to people that live there, people walking up and down the street, just everything's changing for the better, and I think that's very good. What they say, it takes 15 years or 20 years to have overnight success. I think it's good for Gaston County. I think it's good for Gastonia. I do see some opportunities, especially on the economic development piece, where I think we can work together and help each other. And I think it's forward-thinking. I think it's risky. You have to. On the Queen of the South, old George says, "No risk, no biscuit." So, but I like what's going on, and I think it's created some energy. A friend of mine's opening up a cigar bar downtown, looking at what they're wanting to do with the breweries and things, and I think that's going to be really good for downtown. So if there's anything I can do to be a help with that, just let me know. But I think it's good. The City of Gastonia, the council, and yourself should be applauded for that. And I just want to tell you personally.
Thank you. Yeah, and if I can, just add to that a little bit. 18-month construction project during a pandemic delivered on time? Pretty incredible. And if you ask the people at Petawell, or you ask your Whiskers fan over there, or anybody else that's developing downtown, is it contributable to Fuse and the investment? I think a lot of it is. I think most of it, most people will probably say yes. Are we finished? I don't think we're ever finished. What we created here was something that could continue, and that circle can get wider and wider and wider. We had to stop somewhere. City purchasing 16 acres was enough. I mean, we could have purchased more probably, but really, you know, that's for the private side to say.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you this. On the backside, are you looking at offices there between there and the track? Does Parkdale, is that, does Parkdale own that?
They do not. All of that Parcel A, B, and C and the restaurant parcel went to the team owner. That's Velocity Companies.
Now, I'm talking, this is behind, between the field and the track?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but that is Parcel C. Right now, it's a parking lot, about 250 spaces, but at some point in time, that would be developed too.
Okay.
So, you know, really, it's market-driven, office space, probably not too much in demand right now. We're still all working from home. So some of that office and even some of the hotel motel industry is struggling as well with, as you know, through occupancy tax collection and just everything that you see on news.
It'll come back. It'll come back. A lot of those companies that I've talked to, that's the reason they're there. Actually got a call from a guy, I'll give you a call about another, but they want to be near that Fuse where that foot traffic's going to be and people coming in. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, Michael, thank you. Good job. I had the opportunity to ride by one night, and there was a game going on, and there was a guy standing up, peering over this outfield fence from outside the stadium. And the last time I saw that guy, he had the most stress I've ever seen put on a human being. It was Michael Peoples standing there smiling, and we sat up there and talked that night. So congratulations.
Thank you. God, they wouldn't let me in. $5.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank that Mr. Philbeck's comment about biscuits, biscuits are already in the oven. You guys got a lot going on. It's definitely turned out to be one of your more forward-thinking projects, and it's already showing benefit, which is amazing. I think Gaston County is very fortunate to have the commitment from the individuals, from the Honey Hunters, to their commitment to this. But as you said, it's much more than baseball. I would hope that they would entertain, and they may have been approached, they may not have, by Gaston County Schools to allow this facility to be used for an outdoor graduation for each of our high schools, considering the pandemic, considering social distancing, and considering the direction of the sun as it rises and sets over this field. It would be a great opportunity to do that, and I think that would be a great situation for them to get more buy-in in terms of our county. I would propose that you broach them before you broach the school system, but I think that would be a huge, huge benefit to our parents who are wanting to have a real graduation this year and get out from under the auspices of this pandemic. But thank you very much.
So I will say, if I can, Commissioner, 10:00 AM this Friday, Gaston College is doing their graduation at Fuse, so about 2,500 people to be expected over there. So come on out.
I had heard that, and I think it's wonderful, and I'm sure our high schools could, and that's another way to showcase what they have. It's just a matter of scheduling. I know it's difficult because they're playing, like you said, in two weeks. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
We appreciate you taking the time to come over.
Absolutely. Anytime.
Next, Mr. Rusty Rozell from Mecklenburg County. I first apologize for keeping you here so long, being a guest from across the river at the great state of Mecklenburg. But that said, we're very fortunate to have you come over and shed a little light on soil erosion, stormwater runoff, and I would also like to note, if you would, raise your hand, Mr. Brennan, Neil Brennan, who's put a tremendous amount of work into the, well, this whole issue, especially around the Lake Wiley area. Rusty, good evening. It's been a long time since I've seen you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me very much. Thank you for having me here today. Let me just say first off that I'm not here to try to tell anybody what to do. I have tremendous respect for your staff and Jody and Dino. I've worked with them for, y'all getting old. Y'all must not be living right. I'm, on the other hand, I'm getting younger, but I've worked with them for over 20 years, and I have great respect for them, and they're very capable people. Y'all have got a great program, so. But what I am here to do, if you would allow me to, is to tell you about a story from the other side of the river about what we've seen in Mecklenburg County. And you may not know this, but that area along Lake Wiley in Mecklenburg County is the fastest-growing area of our county and has been for the last five years and maybe even as far back as 10 or 15 years. Y'all know how fast Charlotte and Mecklenburg County has grown. It's one of the fastest-growing areas in the country. Well, that area of our county is the fastest-growing area of our county. And there's a lot of unique things about Lake Wiley and the Catawba River, but specifically Lake Wiley, and the same could be said of the South Fork, that make it very, very precious, very, very important, very valuable, but also very difficult to protect. It's important that we protect it, but it's hard to protect. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've tried, what didn't work and what did work, because the growth that we have seen in our county, you are beginning to see in Gaston County. And I will tell you, if you cross Buster Boyd Bridge over into Mecklenburg County and ride up Highway 49, if you've not been up that way in 10 years, you will think you're in Las Vegas or somewhere foreign because it looks nothing like it used to. So I'm just hoping that you'll listen to me, glean from it what you may, and if I can be of any help going forward, I'll be glad to try to do so. But I wanted to start off by just talking a little bit about buttons working. Ah, there you go. So here you go. You see, this is Gaston County, Mecklenburg County. And that previous slide was a slide that shows the majority of Gaston County. That's a picture taken from the back of Mountain Island Dam, which creates Mountain Island Lake, with the Mountain Island sort of in the middle of the picture. And then Gaston County is predominantly what you see over there to the left of the screen. So very, very beautiful picture there showing where Lake Wiley begins. And as far as Gaston and Mecklenburg County, this kind of outlines two counties in red. And I want to talk to you a little bit about three lakes. We've got Lake Norman, Mountain Island Lake, and Lake Wiley. Y'all know them well, and the South Fork of Lake Wiley. Mainly the South Fork and Lake Wiley. That's what I want to focus on tonight because those, that's the portion of the river that we share. And of course, the Catawba River as a whole, there are 11 lakes. These are Mountain Island and Lake Wiley are two of those 11, and there are 13 dams. The lake itself, the river itself, runs 235 miles, beginning up in Old Fort near Asheville and ends up down in South Carolina in Camden. So, and this lake is truly a precious resource, and it's extremely valuable. And I'll tell you why. This is, these are the drinking water intakes around Gaston and Mecklenburg County. In Gaston County, and I didn't know this, y'all have got six surface water intakes in Gaston County. We've only got two. Y'all beat us to death over there on the intakes. You know, you've got a surface water intake in Cheriville, which is on the tributary of the South Fork, and then you've got another one in Bessemer City on the tributary of the South Fork. And then you've got an intake for Dallas on the South Fork. And then you've got an intake for Belmont on Lake Wiley proper. And then you've got two intakes, Gastonia and Mount Holly. I'm just telling you things you already know. They're on Mountain Island Lake. And then Mecklenburg County has an intake on Mountain Island Lake, and we have an intake on Lake Norman. So if you add all that up, in Gaston County, there's about 2 million gallons of water a day being pumped out of the South Fork to provide drinking water to your citizens. And on the Mountain Island, or on Lake Wiley proper, there's about 20 million gallons of water being pumped from Lake Wiley and from the intakes there for Gastonia and Mount Holly over in Mountain Island Lake. And we've got about 110 million gallons that Mecklenburg County is drawing out of the Mountain Island Lake and Lake Norman. We add all that up, it's 139 million gallons, 139 million gallons of water every day. And that's enough water to fill Panther Stadium twice every day. And that's a lot of water. But even more importantly is that for municipal areas, for urban areas, it's our only supply of water. Now, there are a lot of wells in Gaston County. Wells here in the Piedmont, North Carolina have very low yields. I mean, basically, you drill a hole in the ground, you intersect, you intersect cracks in the rocks beneath the surface that those cracks have water in them, and you pump that water out. Yields in Mecklenburg and Gaston County for wells is usually between 15 and 24 gallons per minute. That is no, you'd have to drill thousands of wells to get enough water for one of your towns or cities here in Gaston County. There is just not enough water in the ground. You only got two choices, ground or surface. And in a surface water, these are the two intakes here on Mountain Island. Mountain Island Lake, the one on the right, is for Gaston. The one on the left is for Mount Holly. And they've been, they've been built now for about 25 years, 20, 25 years. And these intakes pump the water right off the surface of the water and then pump it to a treatment facility and then distribute it to your citizens. So you've got a lot of volume, a very reliable source of water if you don't have a drought, and a very good supply of quality water. Groundwater also has some quality issues sometimes with hardness and so forth. So the point in all this is, that's why it's our most valuable natural resource. And as we grow, it becomes even more valuable because if those resources get so bad that we can't use them, and that's possible, they're vulnerable, then we are really out of luck. And so we've got to protect them. It's something we've just got to do as being good stewards for our citizens. And also, y'all know this well, too, that there's a lot of attraction around the lake, a lot of building. I never thought I'd see townhomes on the lake, but you've got townhomes on the lake in Mount Holly. There, and they are coming, and there's going to be more of them. And you've got more people living on the lake. You've got more people recreating on the lake. The lake draws people. It's an amenity to your community, and people don't like muddy water. People like clear water. Muddy water is dirty. It carries pollutants. Brain-eating amoeba, the Nigeria falarai that we had at the Whitewater Center is particularly common in muddy water. So we need to keep that water clear. It's very important for recreation. It's extremely important for our drinking water supplies. So I wanted to explain something to you. Now, this is a simple concept, but you know, I'm going to admit that this only occurred to me not too many years ago. Not too proud of that, but, so I want to tell you about this, okay? So this is Mecklenburg County, and that's a creek that you see in blue. This is 485. To the left of 485 there, you see that blue line. That's a creek. We call it Beaver Dam Creek, and that flows down into a cove, which you see there kind of at the bottom-left corner of the slide. Now, if you have a development up there, let's say on that creek, and pollutants enter that creek, they flow downstream and they hit that cove. And it takes a long time for that water to get out of that cove. And the velocity of that water slows down a lot when it hits that cove. So the bigger that stream, the more development in the area that drains to that stream, the more pollutants that enter that stream. The majority of those pollutants in the stream are bad enough, but when they hit the cove and all that still water, they all settle out. So if you live in that cove, if you recreate in that cove, then you are the recipient of all of that stuff. And that is the big story that I wanted to share with you today because we've got a lot of high-dollar homes in Mecklenburg County on a lot of coves. And we've gotten, been threatened with a lot of lawsuits over the years. People have literally lost the value of their property almost completely because their coves have filled in. And I'm going to tell you a story about that here in just a minute. But I wanted to illustrate that to you because you would think maybe that it was intuitive, but it's a phenomenon. So that, let's say it's mud. The mud washes down that stream, hits that cove, the water stops, it settles out. But it's not just mud, it's nitrogen and phosphorus and nutrients. And as that water gets shallower and more sunset, sunlight penetrates that water, then you're getting nuisance plant growth. You get something like maybe hydrilla, which they've had a nuisance, a tremendous problem with on Lake Norman, and it's like something out of South America. You can't even walk in it. It like grows 10 feet off the bottom, and it's just nasty, weedy-looking stuff. So you get all kinds of other problems, and nuisance plant growth is tremendously detrimental to a water intake. And all these things we've seen, and I just wanted to share that very briefly with you here today. Okay, the other thing I wanted to share with you is, because I get asked this a lot, so can we do more than the state does? And there is authority in the general statutes, and I'm not an attorney, not in any way, and I wouldn't want to try to pretend to know much about the law, but I have But I have worked on writing a lot of ordinances, and these are two of the general statutes that we cite in a lot of those ordinances. And these two general statutes do give local jurisdictions the ability to go above and beyond state minimum requirements. One of these days, I'm going to figure out which button to push. So with that little bit of background information, I just want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done in the face of all this development to try to address these types of problems. And this, that development really hit us 20 years ago. I don't know if you've ever heard of the Palisades Development, but it was a rezoning that occurred in 2000. It was the last rezoning that Mecklenburg County ever did. And we had a lot of conditions tied to that rezoning. It was a conditional rezoning. And when that development hit the ground, it all broke loose. And now it's just exploded in growth. And Mecklenburg County has had a water quality program, a program dedicated to protecting and restoring the quality of our surface water resources in our county for 50 years. We've had a lake program for 50 years. We're one of the few local programs that monitor streams and lakes and implement programs to protect water quality. And we do monthly monitoring. We developed and helped implement the Watersupply Watershed Protection Rules. We issue no swimming advisories when we get elevated bacteria counts. This is all done locally over there by our program. We work with Charlotte Water, which is our utility over there for the city of Charlotte, and we do monitoring for them around their intakes from the lake. They want to know bromide levels and other levels, some of which naturally occurring within the lake, as well as sediment levels, because that can affect the treatability of water. And we monitor for that with them. And we've even worked with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on doing fish tissue analysis for the issuance of consumptive advisories for fish on the lake. So we've done a lot of different things, we've tried a lot of different things. And I tell you, since we've been doing this for 50 years, that the two biggest pollutants that we have are by far and away, the number one is sediment. And you see there, just to keep it equal, the top picture is sediment coming out of a creek and hitting a cove in Mecklenburg County in Huntersville west of Charlotte. So that's on us. The one below that is sediment coming out of Dutchman's Creek in Mount Holly. If you ever ride over 27, coming out of Gaston, going into Mecklenburg County after a real heavy rain, look to your left, slow down, but look to your left briefly, and you'll probably see a big plume of muddy water coming out of Dutchman's Creek. It's been that way 30 years. I mean, that's coming all the way out of Lincoln County. Frankly, I don't think it's really associated with land development activity. I think it's associated with other things. But nonetheless, we do have a lot of sediment that's running into the Catawba River. And that's the hydrilla on the bottom that I talked about earlier. That's a nasty, nasty, awful thing. We don't see much of it on Lake Wiley, but I'm telling you, up on Lake Norman, it is terrible. And it's coming here. And as these coves shallow up and the nutrient levels increase, we're going to have more problems with it. So I want to talk about just a few things that we've done, in addition to the things I mentioned on the previous slide, to try to deal with all this development. And again, take this for what it's worth, but one of the things we've done is we've enhanced our erosion control measures. We have things such as enhanced sediment basins, bigger basins that hold water longer. We have double-row high-hazard silt fences that I'll show you here in a minute. We have a minimum 10-foot buffer around all wetlands and streams, along with the stream buffers. And we have a limit ground cover. You've got seven days before you put vegetation down or seed it. So that's just the taste of what we've got in these special requirements. We identified areas of the county that are critical. And you can see there, that's the area that's colored on that map I'm showing you. So you see the area all along the Catawba is red, that's considered a critical area. So if you're developing in that area, you've got to implement these enhanced measures. And that's in accordance with state laws. State has signed off on all of that. But what we're saying to the state of North Carolina is, we have this resource on our western border in the Catawba River. We want to protect it from land development and erosion problems, so we want enhanced measures. They're very supportive of that. And then we've got those red streams. If there's a stream that's been identified by the EPA as impaired due to turbidity, we have special protective measures on those streams. And that little yellow area down there is related to a Carolina hill splitter and endangered species of freshwater mussel. We have added protection measures down there for it. But what we did is, we looked at our county and said, these are the issues we have with erosion and sediment, and we want to try to put special measures in place to protect the resources. And we did it, and we're continuing to do it. And we've been doing it now for 20 years, and it works.
Rusty, I think Mr. Philbeck wanted to...
Yeah, I want to ask you a question while you're here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you're looking at these enhanced control measures, I don't know, the presentation thing just came off, but... Yeah, there we go. So there are different control measures for different areas. It doesn't apply countywide?
That's correct. Yes. So what we did is, we came up with a list of these added measures. And then we identified where these measures apply. And you don't do it countywide, you just do it in those critical areas that we've identified. Yes, sir. And that's...
What, with builders? Did you get a lot of issues with builders?
You know, believe it or not, we didn't. I mean, matter of fact, in preparing for this presentation, I called one of our builders. And I just said, how much does this add to your cost to put in these enhanced measures? He said, maybe 20% over the standard measures. But he said, frankly, it's just part of doing business, and it's not that big of an impact. He said, you know, they work much better, and so they keep the sediment on site, so you don't have sediment entering coves, and that's what really costs you money when you got to clean it up. So they, we don't get much pushback from them on this. Now, that's us. I don't know, y'all may, but particularly when somebody hears that I'm up here saying this, they'll happily find out all kinds of things. But our experience has been, we haven't gotten much pushback.
Mr. Hovis?
Mr. Rosell, just one quick question. In this area that you have outlined here for enhanced measures, what's been your frequency of violations, failures in that area? And there again, how many fines have you issued for individuals doing contract work in those areas? And I'm assuming you monitor, you, Mecklenburg County's program monitors that, not necessarily the state? Because I know the state projects are monitored by state standards, and our standards, no matter how stringent or different, would not apply.
Would not apply to...
State-managed projects.
They would not.
That's the point, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir.
You have the same situation that we have. We have projects that we monitor, and we measure, and we do the fines and everything under our current ordinance. But at the same time, those state projects, which can be larger and greater impact, which I think is one of those that you saw on your river trip, we have no effect. We have no jurisdiction. And that's just, that's a reality.
That's true.
And that's all, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Some of what you saw wasn't a Gaston County monitored or controlled site, it was a state monitored and controlled site. Thank you.
And that would be a good, to follow up with that question, what, when you're dealing with a site where the state has control, and of course, they have their, I don't like to say minimum standard, because it's kind of biased, I don't like that word. But they have their standard, but you see that it's causing an issue, but even though it's their project, what has been your experience with that?
Yes, sir. Well, you might be familiar with I-485?
Yeah.
Okay? When they were building I-485 through, what we know is, we've got a long creek in Mecklenburg. Y'all've got a long creek in Gaston. The long creek's long. And when they built I-485 through that area in the western part of our county, they were crossing that creek 12 times. And we went to them and said, we think this is going to be a big problem, and we would like for y'all to implement enhanced measures. And we would like for y'all to pay us to put automated monitoring units in the creek, so that when those measures fail, we'll know, and you'll know, and you can fix them, so that the impacts are minimized. And they did that. They gave us over $200,000, and we put 12 monitoring units in there and ran them for about 10 years. And they were extremely cooperative. So I will say that...
You must have a back door to Morrisville.
Well...
My experience with Morrisville's been nothing like that.
We didn't deal with Morrisville, we dealt directly with NC DOT.
Okay.
So we went directly to NC DOT, and we actually got a grant to help pay for it. And we used some, a professor from North Carolina State University to help us design some of those measures, which polyacrylamized, was one of the first times that's ever been used in this area, and that was due to this professor's recommendation. So NC DOT, if you can make a case, they will listen to you. And we've gotten, I can't tell you how many, how much money and how much cooperation we have gotten because of the stuff that we're willing to do. And there are people that are willing to work with you, you know, at the state level. And, you know, we work with the Morrisville Regional Office every day about different things. And that can be a challenge, certainly, but the state will go above and beyond if they see the need. So another thing I wanted to just quickly mention to you is, you know, you've got sediment and pollutants enter the creek in stormwater runoff predominantly, and it gets in a creek from stormwater runoff during construction, which is what we call erosion, erosion problems, and after or post-construction. And here in Gaston County, you have protective measures for both, and they're different. We're the same over there in Mecklenburg County. I talked to you a little bit about the enhanced measures for erosion control during construction, but we also have enhanced measures after construction for identified critical areas of the county, because, I mean, y'all all know, one-size shoe doesn't fit everybody. One-size shoe doesn't fit all of our waters, even in an area like a county, certainly not the area like the state. So why not tailor your measures based on the circumstances, and those watersheds communicate that, get the development community involved? And at the end of the day, they would appreciate you getting them involved and receiving their input. We did that, and a stakeholder process lasted for two years when we wrote this ordinance. You see that blue area along the river there, along the Catawba River and Lake Wiley? And you see the red area there? I guess that's what, pink? I don't know what it is. What's that called? Anyway, pink. And the other blue area north of that pink area, the pink area been Huntersville. All those areas have enhanced controls for collecting and treating stormwater when the site is built out. And I put some examples in there. You know, the EPA and research shows that negative water quality impacts occur when you get at about 10 or 12% built upon area. But minimum state law says you don't have to put in stormwater control measures until you're at 24% built upon area. So if you have minimal state law, then that 12% to 24% built upon area, you're getting negative water quality impacts, but you're not treating it. So what we did over there in Mecklenburg County is, this is our drinking water, this is the Catawba River. We want to protect it more. So we require stormwater controls at 12% in those areas. You can do the same thing. For most part, it can't make much difference, because nobody builds 24% anyway, anymore. You know, they're looking at now not even having single-family development over there. Who knows what's going to happen? But the other thing, we have wider buffers in those areas. We have, and the state minimum does not provide for removal of nutrients. Remember, I told you about the plant growth in the coves due to all the sediment and elevated nutrient levels? The state law has minimal controls on nutrients. We have built into our special ordinances controls for nutrients in those areas to protect against that nuisance plant growth. Another thing, and I think this may be one of the reasons why I'm here, but rezonings, conditional rezonings, for a very long time, 30 years or more, over there in Mecklenburg County, as the water quality program, we've worked with the jurisdictions, that, you know, all the towns. We've got six towns in the city of Charlotte. And we work with them on conditional rezonings, particularly along the lake, to help them craft special protective measures to require, under the rezoning, not under erosion control or post-construction ordinance, but under the jurisdiction's rezoning. And then we work with them to oversee it. That has been tremendously effective, and it's not that hard to do. And so far, really over the past 20 years, and I'm going to show you some of these sites in a minute, I can think of 15 rezonings that we, Palisades being one, that we spent a lot of time on working with these jurisdictions, and it has worked tremendously well through the rezoning, and it's protected a lot of our water bodies. As a matter of fact, I wanted to give you this little example. I know I'm going long, and I apologize for that. But this is an example of one of those rezoning. This is in Brown's Cove. The map down in the lower left shows you where Brown's Cove is, that little square area. That's down there in the southwestern portion of our county. And you can see the cove that's got a red box around it. That's the upper reaches of this cove. You remember that little red line that I drew in the earlier slide? That's where that red line goes. So what happened in the area draining down that red line and into that cove, it's a 3200-acre drainage area or watershed that drains to that cove. Between 2003 and 2012, 884 acres of that, almost 22%, was under construction. This is that area that I told you is the fastest-growing area in Mecklenburg County. That included major expansions of the airport, the construction of I-485, tremendous, there was a school. There was, the city of Charlotte had numerous improvements, and a lot of private development, subdivisions, and so forth. So one of the things that we did is that, as part of that rezoning, we required that there be what's called a bathymetric survey. And that's nothing more than taking a fancy fish finder and a nice GPS unit out there and doing a bottom mapping of the cove. And we identified what the bottom elevation was before development. And then on recurring intervals throughout the development process, we continued to take soundings. And what we found out is that between 2003 and 2012, there were over 30,000 cubic yards of sediment that was dumped into that cove. And it's estimated that at that rate of accumulation, the cove would be unusable in what would now be five years, because it would just be so shallow. And for those 25 property owners along that cove, they were about as mad as an old wet hen at that. I mean, you can imagine, I felt their pain. They had a big investment in their property on the lake, and they were fixing to lose it. So this is kind of a little box that shows you what's going on. In 2003, you can see the average water depth in the cove was almost five feet, and at low water, it was about four feet. And then by 2012, we'd added on average 1.17 feet of mud to the bottom of that cove. And you can see, low water, it would have been 2.84, and high water, it'd be 3.76. And by 2026, at that rate, we're saying it'd almost be three foot of mud. At low water, you'd have one foot of water at the end of the dock. And that was the story for most of the people out there. So what we did, which is probably nothing short of a miracle, and when I tell you this, you might not believe me, but what we did is, we called the developers together that contributed to that problem. There were other 26 notices of violation issued during that period, and there was about $20,000 in penalties assessed. So we knew there were problems with failures. So we went to the developers and said, look, we've got this problem that's been documented, we've got residents that are very upset, and they're going to sue you. They had already hired a lawyer. And let's say, let's work together, see if we can come up with a plan. And they agreed to do that. So we developed a multiplier. The multiplier is based off the number of acres disturbed and the length of that disturbance. The total cost of the project's $500,000. So we applied that $500,000, that multiplier of those $500,000, and split the costs up that way. And the Mecklenburg County Soil and Water Conservation District managed the dredge. The stakeholders put in an escrow account, their money, which totaled, oh, let's see, $435,000. It got the dredge completed. And then at the end of the dredge, we were awarded a grant, which we'd already applied for and knew that we would get. And that grant was in the amount of almost $187,873. So we got the grant, we reimbursed the developers 25% of what they'd contributed in the... So we got the grant, we reimbursed the developers 25% of what they had contributed in the escrow and we paid off the remainder of the balance toward the $500,000 for doing the dredge. So we went back, resurveyed it, the, we took the water level back to what it was pre-development. And now we're going out there every year and doing bathymetric surveys to make sure it doesn't climb back up. But one of the things that we learned in all that is, you can't wait until mud's on the bottom before you do something. I mean, that's, you know, why didn't we think of that? But, well, it's Mecklenburg County, so we're kind of stupid over there a lot of times, but we didn't think of that. But we learned from that Brown's Cove example that we need an early detection system. So we started putting out these little R2-D2 looking things. It's a floating buoy that sits in the middle of a cove. And it's got automated monitoring equipment that hangs down below it. Those are solar panels and it, you know, it's got data loggers on top of it. The water is measured, turbidity included. It's transmitted electronically to a cell phone, it's also downloaded on a website. If there's an exceedance, a lot of mud in the, in the river, in the cove, it automatically calls us and tells us about it. And we get our inspectors out there and find out what failed and get it fixed before it reaches the cove. So it's the combination now of the bathymetric surveys and these automated water quality monitoring units that really give us the one-two punch. And right now, I mean, today, literally last week, we've got, we call it Fish Camp Cove, but it's where the Riverview Inn used to be. Everybody here knows where that used to be. Remember the pirate? Remember the pirate?
Tom used to work there.
Really?
He did.
Well, the Riverview Inn, Riverview Inn is gone. And they're building 150 acre development upstream of it, up there. And if you know and been to the Riverview Inn, you know that's a pretty stagnant cove in there. So when that, remember my example, the red line, it's, it's going to fill in. So we, this is a rezoning, we talked to the developer. The developer is paying us, Mecklenburg County, to do the bathymetric work. And they're paying us to install these automated monitoring units. And we just started, we just bought the equipment and did the math, bathymetric surveys about a week ago. And we'll have all this set up long before they break any ground. And we'll be able to know when the sediment reaches there and we'll be able to do something about it. And if it doesn't work, then we'll know how much sediment they put in there so they can then clean it up. I just put these circles in here to kind of show you all the areas along your, along Lake Wiley, adjacent to your jurisdiction where we've done these things. Long Creek, that was for the Whitewater Center, which you may know about. We did this automated monitoring, bathymetric surveys in there. Fish Camp Cove is the one I just mentioned there by the Old Riverview Inn. Paul Creek Cove, that was a, gosh, it escapes me right now, but the Vineyards, Vineyards was a development there. Then there's this Lockfoot and Lynn Parker Cove. Those are associated with the new river district, which is, I think, about a 150 acre development over there in Steel Creek that has yet to break ground, but is going to be huge. And Brown's Cove is the one I just showed you, that was affiliated with the Berrywick. And then Withers Cove was the sanctuary rezoning. And then the Palisades, there were three coves down there that we did all this work on. And I would have to say that, that they were all successful. I, I did a little cost benefit for it. This is what I mentioned, this is a, a double row high hazard silt fence. So what it is, it's just silt fence material with iron stakes with hogwire behind it. And you can see, if it wasn't had that hogwire behind it where that silt fence would be in that picture, it'd be laying flat down. And, you know, this is really a good mechanism that's very important around construction sites. And putting these enhanced erosion control measures into their Mecklenburg County, we estimated about 25% increase in that cost over what a standard measure would, would cost. To do that Fish Camp Cove that I told you about, it costs that developer a startup cost of $26,000, do the bathymetric survey, buy all the monitoring equipment, pay us to put it in. Ongoing costs are somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 annually till the project is completed and at one year afterwards we're done. And the developer pays for all of it. Then benefit, the benefit to the community, you avoid future increases in water treatment costs because you don't have to deal with those pollutants at your water intakes. And it, it costs money to take that sediment out and to remove those nutrients and other pollutants associated with poor erosion control, certainly. And even when you don't have an intake, just avoiding that muddy water and the negative impacts and the stigma associated with that water and the impacts, the recreational value, you know, there's tremendous avoidance there, which of a cost that really would be borne by the community as a whole. So the developer pays a little more, but I think the community benefits. So I guess the last thing, and I'm going to shut the heck up. We have a shared destiny in the Catawba, you know, that's just, y'all know, just imaginary line running down that river. We all share that river. And what happens to that river is going to happen to both of us. And what divides us also unites us. So we're united in this cause, whether we want to be or not. And if there is anything I can do to help, share some of the information that I presented today in more detail, I'd be glad to do that. And I'll conclude my remarks with that.
Rusty, first, thank you very much once again for taking the time to come over. I'm sure they're not paying you overtime. I'd just like to say I'm very happy Mr. Skeeb is here this evening. I, I've watched you pay very close attention to the slides. Could you possibly email this set of slides to Brian?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Do y'all know one another?
I don't think, do I?
Okay, okay.
Can I get your card?
Yes.
And who, who are you with? Okay, okay, good, I'm sorry, thank you.
We hadn't figured it out yet. Something to do with the county.
But I, I will, I will say that, you know, I, I've met with Mr. Brennan in the past and this is something I think the board would like to do more of than just the minimum requirements. One thing that pops right out are the silt fences. It's a pet peeve of mine, over the years, I've called, I've called the county management team many, many times or the planning department. When I see a trail of mud crossing a street somewhere, it just gets to me that the developers, I think, do a much better job today than they did 15, 20 years ago.
They do.
And, but I think it might be time for us to require the type of fencing that y'all use over in Mecklenburg County. But Brian, this is, you know, something that you're going to work on. It's not going to be quick or easy, but it's something that we're going to, we, I think the board as a whole is very much in favor of enhancing-
Mr., one, one second, Mr. Worley had his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank Rusty for coming over. I know I had a conversation with Mr. Brennan, we talked about it. I said, well, you think we can get Rusty to come up? He said, oh, absolutely. And Dr. Eagle, you know, had the relationship there, working with him through the years. So I appreciate you coming over and I think your last slide really sums that up. We, we share that resource and we know y'all are doing better than we are on protecting the water, at least in some areas. I think it's incumbent on this board, our county, to start down that road of protecting the water as well because it's, we've, we've got to have it for the future. And I've, I've just talked to a resident this morning about alligator weed. They were telling me about that, I didn't know what alligator weed was. They were telling me that this is a foreign thing that not even, hadn't even been in the United States, but it's growing down in South Fork down there. And they explained to me what the alligator weed was doing, this hydrola, all the other problems that are coming from this. So we need to address it and, because down the road 50 years, and Neil, Neil and I've had this conversation. I can remember places that were navigable, skiable areas in the South Fork and in Lake Wiley. They're not there anymore, they're gone. Some, some of it, there's islands there and it's from 20, 30, 40 years of this erosion discontinuing. And it's our, our children and our grandchildren we're protecting, but we've, we've got to do something today.
Yes, sir.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rozell, thank you very much for your insight into what Mecklenburg's done. I don't think Gaston County's ever looked at conditional use permitting as a means to control better those higher impacted areas, especially on our waterways. I know for a fact that we haven't. I've been a big proponent of zoning and conditional use and that falls fully within this board's jurisdiction. Gaston County is very aware and keenly watches water quality. This is obviously a new tool. I don't know how long you've done it in Mecklenburg, but I'm sure it's something that we would love to learn more about and understand what we can do in terms of conditional use permitting. And that would be incumbent upon this board to put those special conditions on a new developer. And then if it's a county project, it'll be incumbent on these individuals who work for soil and erosion control to enforce that. So this has been very informative to me. I'm a former chair of the ERB. I've been on the ERB for over eight years. And I can tell you right now, we take our water serious, but these are some enlightening pieces of information. We once had a control program here in Gaston County. We lost it because we didn't do a good job. But I can tell you right now, we fought tooth and nail to get it back. And since then, I think we're one of the higher rated local control agencies in the entire state of North Carolina. And I'm not throwing slang to Mecklenburg, but I'm just saying we've worked real hard to do that. But I do know that state projects do not come close to what we try to do in Gaston County. I mean that sincerely. I've had the opportunity to visit those sites, I've had the opportunity to see them, and I mean that sincerely. Maybe we need to, all of us, Mecklenburg and Gaston, get together with Deener, who oversees and looks at water quality, and let's get with them and let's help them understand where they're falling short and we move the entire state in a better direction. And I mean that sincerely. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll make it quick. I, I do believe we want to protect our waters. I would think it would be incumbent of this board to maybe do a little bit of research into some of this and look at cost. There's no such thing as builder's cost. All of that's going, homeowners are going to pay for that, other people are going to pay for that. It's like when people talk about, you know, big corporations, just charge them. Well, you're going to end up paying for that. I, I do see some avenues of, of things that I think we can do better. I would like to get with our Soil and Erosion Department and really take a look at this and, and see what may be good. There may be some things that, that we take from Charlotte that can be very helpful. There may be some things that we don't. There may, may be something we discover that could do completely different. I'm always weary of more government regulations and another bureaucratic machine to do something. So I, I do think it's something we need to look at. I, I'd be willing to work with, you know, anyone on the board to do that. I don't know what that first step would be, but I think what would be good is to outline a first step either at this meeting or another meeting to say, hey, this is what we can, you know, look into. So I guess from my vantage point, I'm willing to look at everything, but I'm very hesitant for more government and regulation until we can actually see, hey, this is, this is a good result we can get out of this. This is actually what it's going to cost and things of that nature. I'm a certified arborist, so I work a lot with that 10-foot barrier and things of that nature. And there's a lot that, there's a lot of craziness in that, some of those regulations that just don't make sense. It actually does the opposite of, of what needs to be done. So I think just sitting down and having a conversation would be very good. But I think it needs to be well thought out. Because I remember when I first came on the board, we had some issues. We decided we're going to do A, B, and C, and it didn't work out the way we thought it was going to work out. So I, I think we're all supportive of clean water. We want to make sure lakes don't fill up full of sediment. Some of us, not all of us, are new to that game in, in a certain areas. So just bringing it together and really talking about it, having a committee to look at it and just kind of flesh that out, I think would be a good idea. I don't want to, hey, here's some regulations, let's go do that. I, I think we need to be very leery of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Hovis.
Mr. Chair, closing note, Mr. Philbeck's exactly correct and I actually agree with him 100% on everything he just said. I would think our first step would to be garner the information pertinent to this conversation today from, from Mecklenburg and from Mecklenburg Soil and Erosion Department, put it in the hands of our Soil and Erosion Control Department, along with our planning department as associated with conditional use permitting, and let them garner the details and say, okay, here's the current state in Mecklenburg, here's how it relates to Gaston. And then, once they've done staff work, we haven't spent any money, we haven't changed any rules or regulations. We get that together and then we let that come back to our environmental review board. Our environmental review board is one who poses changes to our Soil and Erosion Control Ordinance to us. These people, we have engineers, we have builders, we have contractors, we have site construction people. These people deal with this every day. And by doing that, we're educating the people who's part of this cause and effect. And we certainly don't want unintended consequences, that's exactly what you were saying. But I think we have a method and a methodology that we can do. And I'll be more than happy to assist staff with that transition, to get that information and let the ERB come back with us with recommendations. And they're quasi-judicial, so they fall under the state requirements of reporting and findings of fact and all those things.
All right. Rusty, we appreciate it again. You'll probably be hearing from us in the short future, but appreciate you sending that information either to Dr. Eagle or directly to Brian. And again, Neil, thank you very much and your keys are on the floor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This concludes our work session for this evening. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, May 25th. Thank you for watching. This will be the end of the meeting.